We'll order the meeting to the Greenwood Common Council on Monday, April the 18th. You would please stand with me for the pledge of allegiance and after the pledge, please remain standing. Will be led in prayer this evening by Chuck Weisenbach, the president of Ron Tyler.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Creator God, we thank you for the many blessings that you pour into our lives daily. We pray that we'll always have a heart filled with gratitude for these blessings. We ask for your intercession as we strive to share these blessings with the world in hopes of making it a better place. We pray for healing, healing in our families and our communities, healing in our state and our country and healing in the world. We seek and need your divine providence to help us move past the coldness that is within the hearts of so many of us and guide us to a respectful recognition of the dignity of each person. With the world once again facing the horrors of war and persecution, we pray for peace in this world. Peace amongst nations, peoples, religious groups, ethnicities and tribal villages. We especially pray for your grace and mercy to be with the people of Ukraine and Myanmar. We thank you for these public servants that gather here this evening as representatives of the community of Greenwood. We pray not only for these office holders, but for all office holders and judges at the local, state and federal level, asking you to bless their discussions, their decisions, their leadership and their integrity. Finally, Creator God, we lift up to you all those in this community who struggle to find adequate food, clothing, shelter and medical services and ask your blessings to be upon them, their needs and their lives. We lift up all these prayers and those that reside in the silence of our hearts in your most holy name.
If you may be seated. The roll call.
Bates.
President.
Campbell.
Here.
Foster.
Aye, here.
Gibson.
Here.
Hill.
Here.
Hopper.
Here.
Lexi.
Here.
Middleton.
Here.
And Williams.
All right, we do have a forum. All of you should have received copies of the minutes for our last regular meeting on April the 4th. Motion. Motion by Mr. Lexi, second.
Second.
Second by Mr. Foster. Any additions, deletions or corrections? Hearing done, then roll call of the minutes.
Bates.
Aye.
Campbell.
Aye.
Foster.
Aye.
Gibson.
Aye.
Hill.
Hopper.
Aye.
Lexi.
Aye.
Middleton.
Aye.
Minutes are approved on a vote of eight to zero. Reports, Corporation Council.
Yeah, I didn't submit my question to your point. If you have any questions, please contact legal attorney.
Right, anything for the control at this point?
I don't think so.
The other committee board reports I did send you all today, apologize for being so late. The report from our RDC meeting from last week. If you have any questions, please feel free to contact me. The other committee or board reports. Mr. Chambers.
For the Johnson County Recycling District, it was announced within the last week or so that they'll be extending their lease for the 900 Harbin Road property, which is the main property that's used for dropping off recycling here in Johnson County. And they'll be thinking about whether to extend that again beyond three years or to maybe build a new facility at some point.
All right.
And the plant commission.
All right. Any other committee or board reports? All right, seeing done, moving on. Public comments, at this time though, I'd like to introduce the mayor of Greenwood, Mr. Mark Myers.
Thank you, Mr. President, councilors. Tonight we have the honor of swearing in four new police officers to the police department. If you're a family members of our police officers, I'm Mark Myers, I'm the mayor. I just want to welcome you all and thank you all for coming to be here tonight. It's a great honor for us as a city to have these new members coming on the department. We have a great department, but more than that, we're not just a department, we're a family. And we treat each other like family. That means you all are now a part of the family of the city of Greenwood as well. And we want to extend the invitation and the offer to you that if you see something going on, if you know you've got an issue, if you're concerned about an issue, feel free to reach out to us so that we can address those quick. These guys are going to be under a very stressful job and a very stressful time and they need all the support they can get. When they come to work for us, this is one of the best training departments in the state. I stand by that every time. We've got great training instructors, we've got great officers that will bring them up as their field training officers, it's a great department to work with. I had the honor of serving here for many years myself as a police officer and very proud of these young men. So gentlemen, if you will, come forward.
Richard, I want to repeat after me. I speak to you.
I just saw.
Be solemnly sworn.
Be solemnly sworn.
That I'll support the Constitution.
I'll support the Constitution.
Of the United States of America. And Constitution.
And the Constitution.
Of the state of Indiana.
And the state of Indiana.
And that I will faithfully. And impartially. Discharge my duties.
Discharge my duties.
As an officer of the Greenwood Police Department. To the best of my ability.
The best of my ability.
And according to the law.
According to the law.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Congratulations. Family members, you don't have to stick around for the rest of the council meeting. If you want to go out and celebrate with these young men, that'd be great. Those thank you and if you do want to stay. We have one more. As you know, Daniel Johnson left a couple of months ago, our city engineer, we hired a new engineer, Mark St. John, he comes to us with six years experience with Truver. And also worked at City of Franklin before that, so just wanted to meet Mark. If you have any questions, feel free to reach out to him. Give him a couple of days to see his letter. We just want to welcome him to the board and want to be on the meeting.
Thank you. All right. All right. This is the opportunity we set aside for members of the public to address the council concerning items that are on the agenda. So if you're here tonight or online, wish to speak to the council about items that are on tonight's agenda. There is a five minute time limit for individual and if you would step forward to the podium, state your name and address for the record, or if you're online, speak up. All right. Hearing done. Moving on to ordinances and resolutions, there's none under notice, intent, consider, first reading or second reading. So new business, introduction of new ordinances and resolutions, resolution number 20 dash 05. I'm sorry, 22 05.
A resolution connects certain area within the city of Greenwood, an economic revitalization area, and qualifies certain real property payments for tax payment and setting the time and place for a public hearing. 1173 Airport Parkway LLC, rebuilding A, B and C, sponsored by Campbell and Hopper.
All right, Mr. Myers.
Good evening, for the record, here at Crime Data Law Firm, we've captured 1173 Airport Parkway LLC. This is an introductory opportunity for you to review this this evening before the public hearing and a vote at the next meeting. This project is undertaken by a group that already has two buildings on the ground and a third approved. All three of those buildings, by the way, are seen tenure real property tax statements. They're going to do three additional buildings on properties further south where the red dots are located, there'll be two buildings on the left, a larger piece, and one building on the right. This is all, as you can see, just west of it, adjacent to the airport facility. And then keep an eye on those two red dots because you're going to see site plan and there we go. So there will be building A on the left going oriented east-west, building B on the left oriented north-south, and building C oriented east-west on the right side of your screen. They will not be built simultaneously, they will be built in stages. And we are seeking this evening a series of tax payments, one for each building in a stair-step fashion. So the first building in building A, we're seeking a four-year tax payment. The second building in, seeking a three-year, and then the third building, building C, we're seeking a two-year. So they will step down as the buildings are completed. They will look generally like the other buildings that are already on the ground in the area. These are those. If you want very quickly to know the types of tenants these buildings attract, these are flex office buildings. And so they've got office or retail area in the front and typically overhead doors in the rear that allow various businesses such as in the, in building one, we've got IDP contracting. They do a bunch of work on the skyscrapers downtown, a lot of the large construction projects, they have 95 employees. Another tenant is Bell Plumbing, they use the front for their office, the rear for their service and warehousing. And then design graphics, it's a graphics company. Fourth tenant in that building is Projects Plus, an engineering firm here in town. The second building that has just been completed and is almost fully occupied has advanced rescue solutions. It's a fire department and first responder training company. They actually do training there on site. Another tenant is NGC, it's a grocery warehouseer and then full sort of fitness, CrossFit type fitness group. So you can see the tracks, a nice mix of small and medium sized businesses. In that second building, all three of those tenants were not in Greenwood before this building was built and made available to them. So we're attracting tenants and employees from outside the city, which is a good thing. So each of these abatements, as I said, will stair-step down with a four and then a three and then a two as the buildings are brought online. They are spec buildings, they get leased about as quickly as they get on ground. The one, second building had tenants before it was even able to be occupied. So we think this is a good model, it's a, it's a good use and good size of building for that area down our parkway. We would like to continue to put those buildings in. The abatements are needed as for two purposes, to attract tenants, but then also because of this neighborhood, so to speak, that we're in, we are dealing with Marion County and Marion County pricing right across county line road across. So in order to compete in that market, these tax payments are really essential for us to keep the rent rates where we need them to be because our construction costs in Greenwood are a little higher than there in Marion County due to the Greenwood architectural standards and other things that bump up the cost of it. So, so this will allow us to be in the market to attract big quality tenants. Have to answer any questions.
I have just one question on the three buildings, you said they're not going to start them at the same time. Do you have a timeframe as to when they're going to start the first one and then each subsequent building?
No, we didn't start the first building until 2023.
Okay.
Skydome out every eight, oh, 12 days, 12 days in March.
All right.
Yes.
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 All right, any other questions at this time? All right, thank you. Next, resolution number 22 06.
Resolution authorizing the issuance of City of Greenwood, Indiana, to help in district tax improvement, W. Bonds of 2022, Whorsville Road Sports Park Project, for the purpose of providing funds to apply to the cost of public infrastructure projects, the incidental expenses in connection to their bid and paying the cost and expenses arising from issuance of our laws. Sponsored by Campbell and Hopper.
Right.
Good evening, Greg Wright, City Control. This bond issuance would be from the Whorsville Tiff District, Whorsville Road Tiff District. It would be to finance construction of the park there at Whorsville Road and I-65. It's property adjacent to our Pleasant Schools and there's also a church there, Harvest Bible Baptist, I believe it is.
Redeemer.
Okay. They do, we do have in place some agreements with them as far as sharing the parking areas. We did an agreement with them a couple of years ago, we helped construct the road to access that in order to share the parking space. This, this bond issuance would be for $9 million principal. The remaining cost of the park would be from park impact fees and the park's operating fund to, to a total of about 1.6 million, so it's a total of about 10.6 million dollar project. The Whorsville Tiff District has actually started generating a little quicker than we anticipated based on the AV and the assessments coming in there. We've got several abatements that are starting to get past their first couple of years of bringing in tip dollars so that would fund the debt service on these bonds.
All right, any questions at this time? Part of my RDC report I sent you was a, some information on the sports park so that you could take a look at that. So hopefully, if you have, it's good information. Any questions for Mr. Wright at this time? All right, thank you very much. Miscellaneous business, this is the second opportunity for members of the public to address the council in this time concerning items that are not on the agenda. So if you're here tonight or online wish to speak to the council, that was your opportunity. Step to the podium, state your name and address for the record and if you're online, we have someone coming, so.
Good evening, my name is Lisa Littner, I'm the library director for the Johnson County Public Library and I'm here to do our annual viewers review with you to clue you in what's happening at JCPL. Just as a reminder for anyone who needs to know, there are three library districts in Johnson County. Greenwood is, makes up the most of your City of Greenwood, but our White River Branch sits in the City of Greenwood's town, city districts. And we're here to share with you some of the things that are happening over in Center Grove area and other parts of the county. Our biggest thing happened last year in 2021 was we built a new library. If you drive down West 31, it's right between Lyer Hill and Clearwater Boulevard, just south of the Dairy Queen in, in Lightland and it's a huge success. We have expanded it 72% from the old location. We have study rooms that are being constantly used and our door count and making the library count are just booming for that area. We're, we're really, really excited that our project was on time and just under budget. And we look forward to starting the White, the new White River areas even more with the good library. In your handouts there, you have a library guide for April, those are our free program all over Johnson County that anyone, any residents, welcome to join us. And I'm also here today with Linda Kilburn, who's the branch manager at the White River Branch and she's going to share some of the partnerships we did in 2021.
Good evening, thank you for having us here. This past year, we got many things that we are proud of. JCPL continues to check out more than 1 million items per year. And all over Johnson County, the JCPL staff has made a difference by connecting residents with resources and learning opportunities. For instance, we held COVID-19 and flu vaccine clinics at all of our locations. We supported leadership Johnson County with a leadership book discussion. We assisted Aspire Community Matters by creating an online resource for students and parents to learn about skilled trades and high demand jobs in Johnson County. We made seed packets available at all our locations to share the love of agriculture and gardening with our residents. And we partnered with Johnson County Soil and Water Conservation District to launch the Little Native Seed Library at our Fauver Ranch. We partnered with Johnson County Park and other city and town municipal parks to launch the Great Park Quest to encourage residents to visit our great parks across the town.
And just to wrap it up, we hope you and your families will join us at some upcoming programs. On April the 20th, we have a Hatching Chicks Program in partnership with Purdue Extension Office at the White River Branch. On May 20th, if you drop in, you can write a thank you letter to someone serving in our armed forces. And then the next day, on May 21st, we have at White River Branch, a Tony Theo concert series with the Indian Acro Symphony Orchestra. And then coming up in June, on the 18th, we partner with the Johnson County Museum of History and there'll be a storytelling series there where someone is reenacting Paul G. McNutt, who was a future governor. And we just hope you are able to come see us at our new library location or visit us at one of our other locations and we're here to answer any questions that we may have.
Thank you for coming tonight. Any questions? Thank you for tuning in to the community. I drive by the newest libraries.
You'll have to stop in sometime.
Yes, you, thank you. All right, anyone else wishing to address the council at this time concerning items that are not on the agenda? Either here in person or online. Right, and miscellaneous business from the council. I've asked the HR director, Lisa Best, to talk to us tonight about the benefits package that the city has for our employees and there's been some questions and so I think it'd be good to hear a lot of benefits packages and then so, Lisa Best, if you don't want, appreciate you being here this evening.
Good evening, council. My name is Lisa Littner, I'm the director of community services for the city of Greenwood. So our employees, based upon law, it requires us to provide full-time, eligible persons to work a minimum of 37 and a half hours and in compliance with affordable care. So to readily work a minimum of 30 hours per week to city benefits. Eligible employees, spouse, and or dependents have coverage to the last active date of their employment. Once a full-time status or eligibility criteria ceases to be met by an employee, medical benefits then cease. So upon that life event, by law, a life event will trigger a life event response due to a separation of employment, a termination, retirement or adoption. The employee, spouse and or dependents will be offered continuation of benefits per the federally mandated Consolidated Uncoercive or Conciliation Act, otherwise in an estopa. Coverage must be opted for within 60 days of the life event. And the cover coverage at this time for the different tiers, which would include medical, dental and vision, from a single covered person would be $1,320 approximately, all the way up to a family coverage, which is approximately $2,710 per month. And a single person with children would then be about $2,116 a month. And that does include all of the benefits that we have now from medical, dental and vision. It mimics our benefit summary, there's no difference in the benefits offered on that. If an employee is married and or has dependents and no longer meets eligibility criteria and they work for an employer who offers benefits, this life event will also allow for them to be unful for their own employer sponsored benefits outside of their normal open enrollment period. They have 30 days due to that life event with their employer to enroll into their own employer sponsored benefits. There's also an option for coverage under Patient Protection and Affordable Care Act through the healthcare exchanges. Upon a life event, I would sit down and work closely with the affected to provide them guidance, benefit information and a letter of proof of loss of coverage if needed to enroll into another plan. All of our city staff are given a $15,000 basic life and accidental dismemberment policy. So the city pays for all of our employees to have that. Basically, if someone has a death, then they will get a $15,000 benefit. If it is an accidental death or dismemberment, they will get an additional $15,000 benefit. For fire and police only, there is an additional $15,000 line of duty death benefit. So depending how the situation occurs, at the discretion of the life insurance carrier, they are the ones to make the determination, is this a basic life claim for $15,000? Is this a accidental death and dismemberment life claim? Is it worth $30 or is it in the line of duty, will we give them $45,000? So that is something that the carrier actually, the department's not the city. The city also provides optional, optional life insurance for the employee and for their spouse and dependent children. The city also has other benefits such as hospital indemnity, critical illness and accident insurance policies as well. So that's pretty much what we have for our benefits.
All right, any questions?
That was a good question.
Sorry.
Yes.
All the members have questions. All right, thank you, Lisa. All right, any other miscellaneous business from the council? Hey, no. Oh, miscellaneous business, moving on to.
I guess it's miscellaneous, it is the CF1 question. Whatever happened to Greenwood Practice LLC, where have they not come to us?
The Amanda said that she has failed to, it's her fault, she has failed to get ahold of them. So she says they will be here at our next meeting, so. All right, miscellaneous business from the council.
I do CF1s.
CF1s.
Get ready. I'm just going to pronounce this one brief. Industrial real property resolution 12 12.
Motion, Mr. Hopper, second by.
Second.
Mr. Foster. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed. Passage unanimously, eight to zero.
I find street commerce parkway real property resolution 14 15 being substantial complex.
Motion, Mr. Hopper, second.
Second.
By Mr. Foster, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed. Passage unanimously.
I find CTW Electrical Real Property Resolution 15 16 being substantial complex.
Second.
Oh, motion, Mr. Hopper, second by Mr. Foster, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed. Passage unanimously.
I find industrial limited partnership real property resolution 16 24 being substantial complex.
Second.
Motion, Mr. Hopper, second by Mr. Foster, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed. Passage unanimously.
I find Greenwood STS LLC Real Property Resolution 17 03 being substantial complex.
Motion, Mr. Hopper, second by Mr. Foster, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed. Passage unanimously.
I find Chair GW2 Real Property Resolution 17 07 being substantial complex.
Second.
Motion, Mr. Hopper, second by Mr. Foster, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed. Passage unanimously.
I find Chair GW3 Real Property Resolution 17 07 to be a substantial complex.
Second.
Motion, Mr. Hopper, second by Mr. Foster, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed. Motion of Mr. Harper, second by Mr. Foster. All in favor, say aye. Aye, all opposed. Passage unanimously.
I find South Tech Park Becknow Real Property Resolution seventeen twenty five to be substantial compliance.
Motion of Mr. Harper, second by Mr. Foster. All in favor, say aye. Aye, all opposed. Passage unanimously.
I find Stag Industrial Real Property Resolution seventeen twenty six to be substantial compliance. Second.
Motion of Mr. Harper, second by Mr. Foster. All in favor, say aye. Aye, all opposed. Passage unanimously.
I find Justice Personal Property Resolution seventeen twenty six to be substantial compliance. Second.
Motion of Mr. Harper, second by Mr. Foster. All in favor, say aye. Aye, all opposed. Passage unanimously.
I find it's not find gateway, but I understand that the chart we have is incorrect. I mean, zero jobs, zero spec building. They're not supposed to have jobs. So. So I do find Gateway Park Building Real Property Resolution eighteen oh one substantial compliance. Second.
Motion of Mr. Harper, second by Mr. Foster. All in favor, say aye. Aye, all opposed. Passage unanimously.
I find B, C, D, P, Greenwood Real Property Resolution eighteen thirteen to be substantial compliance.
Second, from Mr. Harper, second by Mr. Foster. All in favor, say aye. Aye, all opposed. Passage unanimously.
I find Skidell Properties Maps two one five seven Real Property Resolution nineteen oh five to be substantial compliance. Second.
Motion of Mr. Harper, second by Mr. Foster. All in favor, say aye. Aye, all opposed. Passage unanimously.
I find South Tech Park Becknow Real Property Resolution nineteen zero two to be substantial compliance. Second.
Motion of Mr. Harper, second by Mr. Foster. All in favor, say aye. Aye, all opposed. Passage unanimously.
I find South Tech Park Becknow Real Property Resolution nineteen thirteen to be substantial compliance. Second.
Motion of Mr. Harper, second by Mr. Foster. All in favor, say aye. Aye, all opposed. Passage unanimously.
I find Chair G W four Real Property Resolution twenty oh nine to be substantial compliance. Second.
Motion of Mr. Harper, second by Mr. Foster. All in favor, say aye. Aye, all opposed. Passage unanimously.
I find South Tech Park Becknow Real Property Resolution nineteen fourteen to be substantial compliance. Second.
Motion of Mr. Harper, second by Mr. Foster. All in favor, say aye. Aye, all opposed. Passage unanimously.
I find Chair G W five Real Property Resolution twenty one zero four to be substantial compliance. Second.
Motion of Mr. Harper, second by Mr. Bates. All in favor, say aye. Aye, all opposed. Passage unanimously.
I find C O P F C A Indy Building One Real Property Resolution twenty four to be substantial.
Motion of Mr. Harper, second by Mr. Foster. All in favor, say aye. Aye, all opposed. Passage unanimously.
I find C O P F C A Indy Building Two Real Property Resolution twenty one seven to be substantial.
Second, motion of Mr. Harper, second by Mr. Bates. All in favor, say aye. Aye, all opposed. Passage unanimously. I just want to say at this point, there's a lot of these, and we go through them pretty quick. The idea is that we look at them ahead of time so we know. But if we were not here, if one of us was online, we would have to do a roll call vote on every one of these, which would take, which we had to do during the pandemic, which would take a lot of time. Ms. Gibson was not planning to be here tonight, but is here simply so we could do voice votes on these. So she's got a badge back, and I just, I thanked her privately, but wanted to thank her publicly because we would still be here doing these if it wasn't, if she had not come in. So I do appreciate that, Ms. Gibson. All right. Other miscellaneous business, corporation counsel. Controller. Mr. Mayor. We are adjourned. Thank you, everyone.